All right. I'd like to call the regular Bellflower City Council meeting Monday, January 30th, 2025 here at City Hall to order at 5:32 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Santinez?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here.
Okay, closed session items, number three. Mr. Smoot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council recessed the closed session for two items, Items 3A and 3B as listed on the agenda.
There any, I don't think there's no recuses on this one. So with that, we'll adjourn to closed session. All right, thank you for attending. Right now, I'll call the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council to order Monday, January 13th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Santinez?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here.
May I have everybody rise for the pledge, for the invocation led by myself and a pledge of allegiance following with Brian McNury, who is our interim director from Public Safety.
Oh gracious God. Thank you for watching, watching us over here tonight. Please bless our actions tonight and assist us in building a strong and caring community. May you lend us your wisdom and find solutions for the issues that come before us here tonight. We thank you for the opportunity to help others and the opportunity to improve our way of life. And Lord, we ask you to be with everybody that has been devastated by the fire situation here in our Southland. Be with the first responders, everybody that's working hard together to get through this. We ask that you give our protections to our military men and women and may all they always return safely to their families. In your name, amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for the record, there was no reportable action in closed session tonight. Okay, city council announcements. Mark your calendar, on February 22nd, Bellflower residents can pick up two free bags of compost, also known as mulch, provided by CRNR Environmental Services, which is our trash hauler that's contracted with the city. Stop by the Public Works Yard, it's where you'll pick it up, located at 9944 Flora Vista Street, between 7:00 AM and 10:00 AM while supplies last. If you need more information, visit our website at bellflower.org. Mayor Protem Santinez?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. The Bellflower Symphony Orchestra will be performing a winter concert on Saturday, February 1st at 7:00 PM at the William and Jane Bristol Auditorium located at 16600 Civic Center Drive. This free concert will feature selections from beloved classics such as Mozart's Don Giovanni. For more information on this event, please visit www.bellflowersymphony.org. That's all I, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Wendy Morris?
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Bellflower expects to receive federal funding from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, to support the Community Development Block Grant Program, also known as CDBG, which helps address affordable housing and community development needs. To gather input from the community on how these funds should be used, the city is conducting a survey, which will be available through February 7th. To complete the survey, please visit www.bellflower.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The City of Bellflower has partnered with the Long Beach City College Small Business Development Center, Ironfire Workspace, and the Bellflower Farm and Craft Market to host an in-person program that will guide you through the steps on how to accomplish your entrepreneurial goals. Over six weeks, you will learn about planning, product sourcing, costing, pricing, and marketing to the community. The Entrepreneurial Academy is an eight-week, two-hour-per-week program focused on empowering individuals to develop their leadership skills and business acumen. The program will begin Thursday, February 20th. For more information or to register, visit www.bellflower.org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites the business community to its next business-to-business casual connections event, which is scheduled for Thursday, January 23rd, and that will be from 11:30 in the morning till 12:00 PM. That will be held at the Chamber of Commerce office on Bellflower Boulevard. This event offers a great opportunity to connect with other businesses in the city. The Chamber's next monthly morning mingle will be held on Tuesday, January 28th, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. And for more information, you can please call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce, and you can find them at 562-867-1744. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. All right, presentation, we're going to have a student recognition for the community recycling contest. Next, we have Michelle Nichols from Nichols Consulting will be giving us a presentation on the community recycling contest. Michelle, it's all yours.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Protem, Council. Happy to be here, and we, I brought people with me tonight.
Yeah.
Full house. So yes, I'm here to talk about this year's beverage container recycling and litter prevention artwork contest. I can't say that many times without getting tongue-tied. So as a refresher, this is a program that is funded through a grant from CalRecycle that is beverage container recycling and litter reduction-focused. This contest was open to all fifth-grade students in Bellflower. In order to be eligible to submit an art, an artwork, a piece of art, they had to attend an on-campus presentation where we talked about the benefits of recycling and ways to recycle locally. We went over the theme and the contest rules, and provided resources for further learning of the topic and lesson plans for the teachers should they choose to use them. And then the artwork had to match the theme, that was one, a big thing. And then obvious, of course, the winners are featured in the 2025 calendar. So we reached out to all the public and private schools in the city, and three reached out to us. We did presentations at Baxter and Jefferson. I did provide information to Las Flores, but we never got, we didn't get any entries from them. And now we have our calendar. So they have been printed and are out, they were delivered to the schools, and then we have extra copies throughout the city. There are some outside at City Hall. And these are all of the winning entries that are scrolling through here. Though the kids did a great job, we're, we're pleased with, with their work. Looking forward to next year's batch. And that is all of them. Yay! Good job, kids. And so if we could, I think that was all of them?
Great to see all that hard work.
Yeah. And so if they could come on up to...
Yeah, everybody come on up to the riser over here, and we're going to meet, meet down there for a group photo. I cleared that out.
Sorry.
You didn't even tell them to leave. They want to go eat dinner. John from the comedy club was there? Yeah, maybe he had a kid or a grandkid or something. What? Oh, oh. By the way, yeah. Took a picture that way. Took a picture. Good eye. Photoshop, yeah. Imagine me going rough around the collar. Yeah. All right. All right, Mr. Smoot, public comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item, and you'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
All right, this is your time to approach the podium and can speak about anything within three minutes that's not on the agenda. Just state your name and sign in.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and council members. Happy New Year. It's good to see you. The issue keeps coming up about the injuries and deaths at my corner. So the question that they're asking me is, what's the procedure for people at my corner? Okay, it's assisted living at my corner, but what is the procedure for people who are injured? My neighbor got hit, injured, he's back now. He, he says he was hit and run, you know, what's the procedure? Who represents those people who don't, can't represent themselves? What's the procedure in the City of Bellflower when we have a person hit and they don't have anybody to stand up for them?
I would guess it'd be the same if somebody hit and run anybody, you know, if there's a bad, it's very unfortunate and sad that it happens.
Do we, do we investigate those things? Do the police investigate those things?
It would be, yeah, I'm sure the police would call, did the individual call the sheriff's station and ask for a report number?
Um, I'm working on that.
That's where I would start.
I'm working on that. The person is just coming back from injured.
Oh, okay.
So I haven't seen, you know, I'm just...
Then you're already doing something.
Well, no, I got to find out what to do to help him.
Yeah, start with a police, I would guess, start with a police report.
Yeah. This, this is the first person who was injured in the crosswalk. All the other persons that were injured or deceased were injured where the crosswalk should have been for the last 20-plus years. But anyway, the next thing is about homelessness. What, what can we do about rent control? I understand, there's a difference between rent control and affordable housing. Right now, the 10% rent increases are affecting everybody that's not in a rent control area. But right now, even the rent-controlled areas are going to be 4%. And the people in non-rent-controlled areas are going, being, going to get a 10% rent increase. I think we need, we need rent control in the City of Bellflower.
But there already is state rent control.
Affordable housing isn't going to be enough. I look into the eyes of the homeless, I know their names, I know their stories here in Bellflower, Long Beach, and the surrounding areas. And one of the things is they just can't make enough to afford rental, and affordable housing isn't happening. And I know we are in a crisis, but in this city, what are we doing to conquer these rent increases, rent gouging?
You on homeless or this, or you on rent?
It's not just the homeless. Rent gouging has become one of the causes of homelessness now.
Your opinion?
Well, the facts are the facts. But anyway, what can we do? What can we do to solve the problem? Because it's causing people into homelessness.
I don't know.
Okay. Anyway, I'm here. I would like to think that we could do something.
All right, thank you, time's up.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
So has laws at the state, county, or city level changed to make it so that in the CRNR trash agreement of 2011, Section 5.1.111 isn't able to be applied properly anymore?
You got me, because I don't know what that section means.
It says that if a tenant doesn't pay their trash bill, the owner should be notified after roughly 45 days. And I'm also wondering if an audit has been done based off of Amendment 2, Section 22?
So once a year, I know we have the trash company in here, and after several, so many weeks before, take it September 1st, and gone, trying to contact everybody, or there's going to be a lien on the property.
Yes, and that's partially...
And then we have that meeting in September usually.
I believe the most recent one would have been in June or July. And as far as that one goes, I paid them in a timely fashion, but they failed to post the transaction properly, and it affected my property tax bill.
So there was a clerical error made, is that what you're saying?
It sounds like there was a variety of errors made, but it would be helpful if the owners were notified in a more timely fashion, because if the contract says that they're to be notified after roughly 45 days, it shouldn't take five months.
Have you contacted CRNR, or are they correcting it?
Multiple times, and that's why I finally have enough intelligence to come here and bring these concerns to the board.
Okay. Should we, Mr. Smoot, should we have him talk to Public Works regarding the trash contract?
Well, I had to come here, and it was very helpful now that it was actually posted online, and I could properly see it.
The contract?
Yes, the, the four amendments, and really, it's now starting to look like Frankenstein's monster. So if we go back with CRNR in 10 years, it'd be useful to have one good, solid contract instead of a bunch of amendments to read through.
So what is it that you want from us?
What I would like is to know whether or not the regulatory environment has become so hostile, owners can't be notified in a timely fashion if there's issues, because there's no need for my property to be put forth in front of the council because the bill wasn't paid. If I was notified in a timely fashion, my property address could have been left out of that meeting.
Got it. So I guess we'll look into it and get back to you, because there's nothing we can do tonight.
That's understandable.
Okay.
But that, that 45 days passed, and then an additional couple of months passed until it reached the June, July meeting. So what can be done to, assuming the regulatory environment allows people to be notified in a more timely fashion?
Well, we have to see what went wrong first.
So when can I expect to hear back from a representative of the city?
I think we'll, is...
I think this issue was addressed back when we considered this, and I don't know what the month was, but when the, when these items came before the council previously with CRNR, and it was discussed with this individual then. If you'd like our staff to reach out to them, we're happy to do that, but we'd have to...
So you've already been talked to?
I had to come back here to request actually being able to see the document, because I was suggested that I review the document. So I reviewed the document.
So you've already been talking to staff, the people that know more about this than I do?
Well, I talked to Mr. Smoot, and he suggested I read the contract, and I had to come back here to actually be able to see it. And now that I've had an opportunity to read it and talk to CRNR, I saw that they effectively doubled billed me because I paid them.
Have they corrected that error yet?
Finally, it was a hassle, but that was addressed.
Okay, it's corrected. You're made whole right now?
Currently, but I want to avoid this situation in the future. And if the regulatory environment allows the owners to be notified in a timely fashion, the owner should be notified in a timely fashion.
All right.
So when can I expect to hear from a representative of the city about the timelines?
The, you've already read the contract.
I reviewed...
So, but we have, it's a third, it's, it's CRNR that reports, am I right?
Mr. Mayor, I believe it sounds like this issue's been addressed by CRNR, and it's been corrected. If there is a future issue, we'd be more than happy to address it, or CRNR, I'm sure would be more than happy to address it, but if we're going to sit here and talk in hypothetical situations for the future, I'd have trouble engaging in that, to be honest.
Well, I would encourage other people to take a look at their property tax bills to see if there's a line for Bellflower DRB, CRNR. If they paid in timely fashion, they too might have also been double-charged. So is there any insight into whether or not the owners can be notified in a more timely fashion?
I don't know at this, this point. I don't have the contract in front of me. You obviously have the contract.
Well, it's now available online through the city website now that the issue is properly addressed.
But the contract wasn't there previous?
No, I had to come here and ask where the final piece was, because I was going on a scavenger hunt.
Mr. Mayor, for what it's worth, the contract has been posted on the city's website, including all of its amendments.
Yes, it is.
And you were able to get it and see it and read it?
Yes, and the contract says that after 45 days, the owner should be notified.
Okay.
But I didn't hear about this until...
So there was a mistake made with the 45 days, and you brought it to somebody's attention, and then you were made whole?
I am now trying to minimize the chances of people being hassled in the future.
I can't, I can't say what the future's going to bring.
And that's understandable, but we can try to anticipate it and minimize the chances of hassles in the future.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor...
Your three minutes are up.
Can I just mention something? Isn't the contract specifies when the property owner is going to be, needs to be notified before it comes to the city council, before the lien is actually placed? So there's, there's different steps that CRNR has to take?
Correct.
Okay, so there's spelled out.
There is, there is a process, there is a process before it comes to the city council for consideration, and there's also a process when it comes to the city council for consideration that it will be coming before the city council.
Right, exactly.
So there's an opportunity to come here.
So it was really spelled out.
And I made a payment to them on July 2nd, but it failed to post until July 19th, when strangely enough, July 18th was the deadline to receive the funds. So there was multiple failures, and it would have been helpful if I was notified in March, April, so it didn't even have to come before the council or the city.
Thank you for your input.
I'm still waiting for the answer about when I can hear back about the timelines.
City manager just said that you'd already been made whole.
I was, you told me that you were going to have to look into it and that I'd hear back.
Well, now I found out more information that you've already been talking to staff and, right?
That would be correct.
Am I right?
But it's great to follow a question, and you have failed to answer that question.
You already have more information than I did when you come to this podium. And now I did some digging, and the city manager has told me where you're at and what you've found, and you've got the contract. You were made whole. I cannot decide what's going to happen in the future, I'm sorry.
Well, would it be possible for the city to talk to CRNR about actually trying to abide by the timeline put forth in the contract?
I would say that, that would be good, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Happy New Year. I hope you guys are doing well. I didn't have plans to talk, but I was inspired by my neighbor who spoke at the beginning of public comments. I just had a question. What sort of resources are available for tenants in this city, specifically in protection of tenants' rights? Because beyond like rent being an issue and difficult for people to pay rent, I just wonder like, do we have resources available for all of our tenants, that are the people that pay rent, including like low-income people, people that speak second languages, or English as their non-first language? I just want to know, like, do we have those resources readily available?
We still follow state law.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd offer you this as well. Actually, we've just renewed our contract with the Fair Housing Foundation, and if there are tenants that have specific issues, if you have specific questions, they're specifically there for that purpose to assist tenants through many processes. Actually, Travis has information right here, if you want it for yourself or want to hand it out. We always have that information available at City.
And how can we make sure that like this gets to, you know, people that live in, there's a lot of big apartment complexes, and I feel like it might not be so easy for people that are renting, working-class people that are working most of the time, to get these sort of resources? Like, how do we, and how are we ensuring that they know about this and they're aware of it? Is that something that's of importance here, or like, I don't know if it's a concern for you guys?
Got any ideas?
Yeah, I would say this, through all of the city's communications channels, this is something we, this partnership with Fair Housing Foundation, and they work, by the way, in not just Bellflower, but in surrounding agencies and all over Southern California as well. But we do, we put it out through our newsletters, through our East Citizen newsletters, through our social media. We put that out as much as we can. So if somebody has questions about that, you're more than welcome to call us here at City Hall, and we can connect you with them, or call them directly, whatever's helpful.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Good to see you guys, City Council. Mayor. Oh, we also have information at the library, so we're more than happy to have, put those flyers out, where the citizens can come out and get that information. But today I'm here to talk about, we're starting a tutoring program again. It's similar to what we had in the summer. So this will be an opportunity for parents to sign up. It will start January 28th and go till May 22nd. The commitment would be one hour a week for the duration of the, of the program, completely free, and this is going to be, the county is hiring a tutoring company that will be... The commitment would be one hour a week for, uh, the duration of the, of the program. Completely free and this is gonna be, um, the county is hiring a tutoring company that will be doing the tutoring. Right now, we're looking at maybe thirty to thirty-five kids that we can help. And it would be Tuesday through either, uh, Tuesday through Thursday, so they would have one hour appointment after school, uh, the parents can choose. Signups are currently, um, um, I mean, we started the signups already. Um, so if anybody's interested, they can go to LACountyLibrary.org/readingstars, uh, for, uh, to sign up. If they want more information, they can always visit, visit us at the library. Thank you.
Thanks again. Good seeing you. Happy New Year, by the way. Anyone else? Not seeing any, we're gonna move on then. Ordinances and resolutions for kid consideration, Mr. Smoot, twelve A. Got caught.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna pass this one off to our, uh, city clerk, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Smoot. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I have a brief verbal report for you. Uh, this item is to consider the introduction of ordinance number fourteen thirty-seven, which if approved, will add a new section two-point-two-eight-oh-five-oh to the Bellflower Municipal Code to regulate uncontested municipal elections and allow uncontested elections to be canceled, even if a proposition or initiative is placed on the ballot. California Elections Code generally sets forth provisions to cancel an election and appoint the person nominated to the office when the number of nominees is equal to the number of offices to be filled at the election. However, this provision does not apply if a city measure has qualified for the same election cycle. We experienced this situation with the twenty-twenty-four municipal election cycle in which three district seats on the city council were open and one city measure qualified to be considered. In the, in two of the open offices, only one individual was nominated for each, but the city was required to submit all three open seats to the voters for consideration and did so at a significant public cost. Charter cities may adopt regulations governing municipal affairs, including election procedures. Now that the city's charter has been adopted by the voters, the city council may determine whether the city should enact a regulation different from that in the Elections Code. The city council may allow uncontested elections to be canceled, even if a proposition or initiative is placed on the ballot for consideration. Such, such action is in the public interest as it helps avoid unnecessary costs and expenditure of public resources. The recommendation for this item is to read by title only, wait for the reading, and introduce ordinance number fourteen thirty-seven. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any questions to staff? I think we all know what this one's about.
I'd like to make a comment, let a question, um, just for the, um, listening public. Uh, the city clerk did a wonderful explanation, but I just kinda bring it down to earth, so to speak. In the last election, there were three districts, uh, whose council members were up for, uh, election or reelection. Uh, districts one, two, and four. And, um, districts two and four had only one candidate. So we could have canceled the election for those two districts because there's only one candidate. But out of abundance of caution, because of the existing law, since we were a general city, uh, and there was a ballot measure at the same time, we had to place, um, the candidates, although only one, for each district, uh, in the ballot. And practically, uh, based on the last estimate from the, um, LA County Recorder's Office, that costed the city fifty-four thousand dollars, which basically was a necessary election. So now we, we are a charter city. I'm glad that, uh, our city staff, the city manager and staff has brought forward this amendment to the ordinance that we can, in the future, should that situation happen again, we can cancel the elections for uncontested election and save the city a lot of money. Because fifty-four thousand dollars is a lot of money to be wasted for, uh, a non-competitive election. So this is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, or Mayor Protim Sunny Santaynez. Any other questions?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you. Mr. Ochiki, I have a question regarding, um, section three, item A, page four. Number, uh, there's one, you know, we have one, two, and three listed. Wha- what would be the purpose of listing number three? Which is hold the election if either no one or only one person has been nominated? Cause that would be the same state that we're in now, correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so that verbiage is taken directly out of the Elections Code and it's put in there as an option for the city council. If it chose to move forward with an election, notwithstanding the circumstances, it could. Uh, certainly you can delete it at this point. If you don't wanna have that option, I always prefer and advise that the council have as many options on the table as possible so that can pick one or the other based upon its own public policy.
So essentially in that option, we, it would, the office or the body would choose to spend the unnecessary funding?
Well, I won't say unnecessary funding. Would choose not to spend the funding or would choose to spend the funding. I'm not gonna provide the comment on that. If, if I may, since my microphone's on at the moment, I make an observation with regard to this particular piece of legislation, which is, this is the first of several different types of things that we're going to be bringing forward in the next couple of months now that the city is a charter city. Uh, for example, on the twenty-seventh, we are planning to bring forward a reaffirmation of the California Fire Code, based upon ordinances and exercise of the city's charter powers. And we have, uh, purchasing policies, prevailing wage policies, and all sorts of different policies coming up that are gonna be in the hopper for the city council's consideration in the near future. So this is the first one out of the chute, simply because this was discussed, uh, right before the election last year. And I was the bearer of bad news that you had to move forward the way that it was, so hopefully this will, uh, ease your, your pain.
Okay, everybody good? You didn't wanna make a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the city of Bellflower, um, to read by title only, wait for the reading, and introduce ordinance fourteen thirty-seven, an ordinance adding a new section two-point-two-eight-point-zero-five-zero to the Bellflower Municipal Code regulating uncontested municipal elections.
Second the motion. Got a motion on the floor by Mayor Protim Sunny Santaynez and a second by Councilmember Coops. Call roll, please.
Mayor Protim Santaynez?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Item twelve B. Mr. Smoot.
Mr. Stewart.
Let, let me call him, see if he wants to come take his. I will happily take that connection, by the way. I'm gonna hand this item off to Len and then if you have, uh, questions about the process and things, I might call Brian up as well, so Len, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Smoot.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Before you tonight, we have a consideration and possible action to adopt resolution number twenty-five dash oh-two, a resolution adopting pursuant to the BMC Chapter two-point-oh Public Contracts Code, Section two-zero-one-six-eight, finding that a local emergency exists within the city and authorizing contracting without the need for bidding pursuant to Section two-two-zero-five-zero and the Bellflower Municipal Code, Section three-point-two-eight-point-zero-seven-zero-D, and finding that the nuisance abatement project at seventeen-zero-four-six Bellflower Boulevard is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act as an emergency project. So background on this, um, the city has been actively engaged, uh, in code enforcement efforts at the property located at one-seven-zero-four-six Bellflower Boulevard. This is the old US Bank property right there on Bellflower and Park Avenue. Uh, the code enforcement efforts date back to May of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, they're generally focused on overgrown vegetation, graffiti, um, and the general blight of the structure and the surrounding area and parking lot at that location. Uh, the city's code enforcement team, uh, was successful in obtaining a, uh, an abatement warrant, uh, for the property back in April, uh, two thousand and twenty-four, which allowed both code enforcement and public work staff to enter the property itself, remove graffiti, uh, trim trees and the vegetation that were there. Let's see, what else? They also removed drunk, junk, trash, debris from the property. They painted over, uh, boarded up windows and, um, ensured that the exterior portions of the property remained free of blight as best as possible. Following that, the city's attorney's office, uh, made several attempts to collect reimbursement uh, for the costs associated with this abatement, but received no response from the property owner. As such, um, the city went back in October, uh, to get, uh, a warrant reissued for this process. As it currently stands right now, the property is currently littered with trash and debris once again. Uh, there continues to be overgrown vegetation and graffiti and there continues to be broken windows at this, at the, at the location. As such, uh, emergency action to abate these conditions is required to protect from the imminent threat to public safety and private property, as well as abate the various conditions amounting to public nuisances and blight. On November, November nineteenth, uh, twenty-four, the LA Superior Court issued an abatement warrant to demolish the structure and to bring the property into substantial compliance with the city's vacant lot ordinance. So from that, um, there may be some gaps in the code enforcement efforts, but Brian McNerney from the Public Safety Department is here and he'll be able to answer questions that, more detailed questions that you may have as it relates to the code enforcement efforts. On the public works end of things, uh, what we have tonight is, um, the idea of abating this under an emergency, um, an emergency order. So pursuant to the Public Contract Code, uh, Section two-zero-one-six-eight, the city council may, upon a four-fifths vote, declare that the public interest and necessity, uh, demand the immediate expenditure of public money to safeguard life, health of property because of an emergency at this location. Based upon the current condition of the property at one-seven-zero-four-six Bellflower Boulevard and its non-compliance with the BMC for the past several months, a local emergency does exist and it is within the city's ter- um, territorial limits. Subject to the limitations of the resolution, the city manager, as the Director of Emergency Services, is empowered to carry out all emergency powers conferred upon him or her as the Emergency Services Director by local and state laws. So in summary, uh, the adoption of rev- resolution number twenty-five zero-two would do the following. First, it would authorize the city manager to take all the steps necessary to protect public health, safety, welfare, and property, including without limitation, awarding contracts in accordance with, uh, Public Contract Code subsection two-two-zero-five-zero and the BMC Chapter two-point-two. And secondly, uh, direct the city manager to take all steps necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare, including without limitation, awarding contracts in accordance with the Public Contract Code two-two-o-five-oh and Bellflower Municipal Code two-point-two-zero. So with this request, uh, the anticipated fiscal impact that we've, um, we're looking for authorization to, to go up to and as it relates to all this is three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Um, that would include the, the demolition of the structure itself. Um, we already have a contractor, um, that we've, uh, obtained some pricing for to do that. There's also the lead and asbestos removal that has to take place. The AQMD permitting process that you have to go through when you do demolitions like this. And then follow it all of that. Once we're in a position, then we would come back and do the landscaping in accordance with the, um, the vacant lot guidelines that the city council has established for, for that location. Uh, the recommendation to city council, um, is that one, adopt resolution number twenty-five dash oh-two. Two, authorize funding up to three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the nuisance abatement project at one-seven-zero-four-six Bellflower Boulevard. Or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. I can answer any of the questions on the public works end with the contracts. Uh, then again, like I mentioned, Brian McNerney can fill in the gaps if there's any, uh, detailed questions about the city's code enforcement efforts at this location.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might, I'm gonna step in here for one, uh, quick amendment to this. As you can see, there was some, there was a supplemental item submitted, uh, today for this. Having said that, there's still one thing that we need to correct out of this. In the resolution, Section three D should have stayed in that resolution. That's amending the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five budget to establish a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar appropriation from the CDBG General Fund Enforcement, including, uh, corresponding adjustments to revenues to pay for property abatement at one-seven-zero-four-six Bellflower Boulevard. That, that section should have stayed with the corrected address, not been deleted in its entirety. Yes, because we will need the budget appropriation for this. Having said that, as Len mentioned, after the abatement's completed, this is a code enforcement process. We would bring you back a lien to assess all of these prop, these costs back onto the property.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I could just add a housekeeping item. We did go into court today and extended the time period for the abatement warrant in order to accommodate the abatement for this property.
So we foresee we have enough time.
Correct.
Thank you. Great report, Len, on, uh, for something that's been going on for so long. You hit every tough spot. Hurdles that we've been through. Uh, Victor, you have a question or staff?
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question related to, I mean, I, I understand why we're here. Obviously, there's been, um, the building has been broken into multiple times. It is my understanding that there has been fires within the buildings, things of that nature. And obviously, it's in dilapidated condition, so I understand why we're here. My question today is, do we have to, does staff have to come back to us to impose our vacant, um, our vacant ordinance?
The vacant lot ordinance?
Yeah, the vacant lot ordinance, or can we do it all tonight?
Yeah, so actually, part of the reason for the budgetary amendments in this process, for that kicking up a little bit, is we wanna make sure that as we're doing this abatement, we're not demolishing a building and leaving an unfinished foundation or anything like that. We wanna make sure if we're gonna go do this, we're abating it to the city's standards and getting it all done. That's part of the reason for the change you see here before you.
Perfect. That, that's, I wanna make sure that that's spelled out because that's exactly what I would hate to see is, uh, is, you know, just a demoed building, demoed area if we're not bringing it fully to compliance with our code. Um, do you really believe three-fifty is sufficient?
I would leave that to Len and Brian.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fairly comfortable with that number at this point. I made the number so I didn't have, so I wouldn't have to come back a second.
Understood.
And that includes landscaping and fencing.
Yeah, that, that. Correct, yeah. It, that includes some, the, that would include bringing it into compliance with what the council's expectations are for the city's vacant lot ordinance.
Fair enough. Thank you very much, staff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wendy, do you have anything?
Yeah, in the portion where it says, um, let me just get on. The property owner was formally notified by the city turn, uh, city's attorney's office of this warrant and the city's intention of following through with it. If the owner did not immediately bring the property into full compliance by demolition of the structure or eliminating all elements of blight and dilapidation. At this point, what could they really do to eliminate all elements of blight and dilapidation? Is there, I mean, it's a vacant building. We know there's people that can go inside and get warm and do whatever.
Certainly.
Start fires to get warm and.
When we go to get an abatement warrant for the judge, we take through, you know, what's required as part of our code. Uh, in this case, the abatement warrant says to that end that demolition of the structure is, is the means to accomplish that.
Okay.
No turning back.
Yes, that's, I wanted to make sure that's what that meant.
And to note, the property owner has had, um, ample time to be able to accomplish that on his own own cost. And when the property owner doesn't do that, that forces us into the position that we're in here today.
Brian, did you have something to add?
No, I, Mr. Smoot just answered that question. I was getting up to answer that, so.
Okay.
All right. Dan, you have anything?
Yes, uh, Mr. Grecky. The property, is that all one lot or do you know? So there's a building and there's a lot to the south of it. Do you believe that's all one property?
Or do you? So, uh, uh, Councilmember Coops, uh, the, yeah, so we're dealing with one specific property with one APN number and it's all inclusive of the parking lot and the building itself.
So historically, that alley that runs between Arkansas and Park is privately owned by those that adjoin the property. You're, you're aware of that?
Correct, and we're not touching that private alleyway whatsoever. Correct, and we're not touching that private alleyway whatsoever. We're stopping just short of that.
But the, the property is, the, the alley is divided in half. So half this alley belongs to this abated property and the other half of the alley belongs to the remaining property owners.
Correct, yes.
So when you abate the property, I know you're taking down the building. What are you doing with the parking lot? Are you taking it down to the dirt where all the concrete and all the planters are gone?
Uh, so no. What the intent of the abatement's going to be is, first of all, remediation of any low mold, I'm sorry, lead or asbestos inside the structure, then the demolition of the structure. And then what will end up happening is a full compliance with the city's vacant property ordinances. And that's going to involve mulching the entire lot. So we are not going to chew up or remove any of the concrete or the asphalt. It's just too much of an expenditure to do that. So we're going to mulch over all of that and then also put in the.
Mulch on top of concrete?
We are, yes.
Is that advisable? Is that done? I mean, to me, and that, mulch belongs on a natural setting, not on concrete, but that can be done where it doesn't just blow away?
So far, we're not getting answers of no, so.
All right. As many of you know, this property we're discussing, just for those viewing public, is on the corner of Park and Bellflower Boulevard. That'd be the northeast corner. And if you're an old time Bellflower resident like I am, that once was Nance Chevrolet. And they wanted a business about nineteen sixty when they invented the Corvair. But anyway, that was a car lot and the showroom is the building that we're discussing has to, needs to be abated. So in a perfect world, when it's all said and done, the building will be gone and that foundation will be removed. Then the lot as we see it would remain, be covered with mulch, and then have one of our white fences placed around it?
You are correct, yes.
Okay, and so, and that we hope we can accomplish for about three hundred and fifty thousand, according to Mr. Grecky.
Correct.
Any costs we've incurred, obviously, we're in front of judges to try to get to this point and we're incurring legal fees. Are we going to be able to reciprocate that out of the, the owner of the property as well as the abatement?
Uh, so yes, to answer that question, whenever we do abatements of this nature, all staff time and legal fees are also charged back to the property owner as a lien.
Okay, so we, the city would not be out any money other than fronting the money and then receiving it back if in fact we need to lean the property on property taxes. Am I following it correctly?
Yes.
And as far as the owner goes, we have had now, no communication with him for how long?
The, so this was actually been my case and I followed this case for almost the last two years. The property owner, the last communication we had with them was when we placed the last lien on the property for roughly eleven thousand dollars. But when we did the work back in April of two thousand twenty-four, there, he hired an attorney and that attorney reached out to us to come up with a payment plan for the, for him to pay that off. And we provided through Carl's office a sixty day timeframe to pay that off and that never happened. And then we have never heard back from him nor his attorney since that timeframe.
So there's eleven thousand dollars on the books currently before we start the process?
Correct, and that would be in addition to everything that we may be doing to it.
And so, and then on top of that, the attorney's fees for going in front of the judge and get the abatement orders?
Yes.
And the potential to spend up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to clean up the property?
Yes.
So I haven't missed anything?
Haven't missed anything.
Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just so that the record's clear, the three fifty does not include staff time, legal time. That is purely the contract time for the actual physical abatement of the property. So everything else will be rolled up into a lien that will be leaned against the property that we collect at the time of property tax collection or before closed upon the property. So the overall project is going to be likely more than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Could be five hundred, the way you're talking.
Could be five hundred, but we will recoup it all on the back end of things.
Now, if that property is already indentured with other debt, do we gain a foothold above and beyond those that are already in line?
Yes, so abatement liens on real property have superiority over nearly every other lien on the property. It's treated as if it's a tax lien on the property.
So if anyone held a, a position on that property, that is in jeopardy based on what the city can get ahead of that, correct?
Correct, and frequently, we also inform the mortgage company, for example, if there's a mortgage being held on the property, that this lien is pending so that the mortgage company has the opportunity to jump in and, and try to pay off that lien before the property's foreclosed upon or the property tax becomes, or the property tax bill becomes due.
Do you know whether or not we've gone through that procedure to notify any mortgages?
Uh, looking at the correspondence, we have not done so for this particular piece of property, but we have been sent at least five different letters to the property owner. And as Mr. McNerney mentioned, there was some effort at some point by the property owner and the attorney for the property owner, but we've heard nothing since certainly October or November.
At least, yes.
Could we find out through the public records whether or not there is liens on the property? And, and I'd feel better about letting those people know.
We'll certainly look at the preliminary title report that we can pull and, and inform anybody that has a lien on the property.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem, Sunny Santinas.
Thank you, Mayor. How many square feet is the lot?
Oh boy, that I do not know.
Just want to make sure that there's value once it's the mo, the building is demolished.
I'm going to ask Travis to look that up real quick.
Okay, okay. In the meantime, if let's say the, the city council adopts this Resolution twenty-five zero-two tonight, when can we start?
So where we're at right now, as Mr. Berger alluded to, alluded to earlier, we, just today, myself and Assistant City Attorney, Tim Cantman, went to court and we got a ninety day extension on our warrant. So we have ninety more days from January seventeenth to complete everything. Where we are currently is, the asbestos and the lead testing has already been done and a report has already been filed with the city, so we know what needs to be done from that aspect. We simply all, we have a contractor lined up, as Mr. Grecky pointed out. We just need to get a contract with them and, and we're going.
Okay, so it can be done as soon as one week?
No.
Yeah.
Well, I'm asking the question.
No.
So let, don't let me guess, okay?
I, I would.
So I, I would, I would say, given our efforts to, okay. So in addition to the lead and asbestos testing, there, because of the proximity of the building to the adjacent building, there will have to be, the demo contract, contractor will have to come up with a, a structural design related to the demolition. They've given, given us a timeframe of possibly one week for them to come up with that plan. Then in addition to that, they, at the same time, they have to submit their application to the AQMD for the demolition process. That's usually a ten to fourteen day window. It happens a little faster than that. And then we have the act of getting them under contract, actually under contract here with the city, which has a little bit of, a time situated with it. I'm tentatively, when I was ta, talking to Mr. Smoot last week about it, I think we're probably about four to five weeks out before we actually see work being done there at that location.
Okay, have done, have they done any, any contract with us? Yeah.
The, the demo contractor?
Yeah.
No, he has not done, no, they have not done work with us yet.
So they don't know all the insurance requirements and those kind of stuff, okay?
Well, he, no, he's, he's well aware of it. Them being aware of it and them getting it done are two different things.
At least they're aware, that's one step.
Not just them, it's everybody.
Okay, all right.
It, it, it's just a process. It, it, it takes a lot of time, a lot of back and forth. And, and it doesn't matter if you're signing the contract to clean windows for us or, you know, doing a multimillion dollar project. It's, there, there's just a, a process and, and it, and it takes some time to do it.
So sometime next month would be reasonable?
Yeah, I, I'm pretty comfortable in saying probably four to five weeks is when we start seeing work done at that location.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Protem, the answer to your question is nineteen thousand six hundred and seventy square feet.
Nineteen thousand?
Half an acre, give or take.
Okay, okay. Okay, there's value. At fifty bucks, there's a mi, a million dollars. Okay, that's good. I feel good. All right, Mr. City Attorney, do we have anything, do we have everything we need from the court to basically start this process?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Sanchez?
Mr. Mayor, actually, one follow-up question that came up to my mind once Councilmember Coops was speaking. Given the location, right, the, how it's in the heart in the downtown area near, you know, it's kind of an entry waypoint. I'm wondering if the flowerbed area and like the surrounding area should be more than just the, the wood chips or if it should be, you know, flowers, like an actual garden, a little bit more of a, you know, nicer. Because I think we have that available in our code that allows us to beautify something. Because I can, I believe that once this happens, it's going to sit the way however we do it. And so I'm thinking it's going to be vacant and abandoned like that for a long time. So I'm thinking we may go an extra mile here and just beautify.
Why don't we do this? We bring that, we got a time. We got five weeks.
Okay.
Why don't we bring that back to the next meeting or something like that and we can kind of have staff go out there and look at it?
There you go.
I, I, I will say to that point, Councilmember Sanchez, in situations where the city has taken a court order action to abate on these vacant properties, we historically have not done, gone that route simply because we don't have air, access to irrigation. So if we are going to plant flowers or drought tolerant plants, we may need some amount of watering. We don't have the means to, to get that done unless we're talking public workers is going out there to water these things, which we don't really want to get involved in that level of detail with it.
Right, and, but I think to the mayor's point, I think we can look at drought tolerant plants that don't need watering. Just something that, you know, it's going to be an eye, it's going to be in the downtown Boulevard, Bellflower, you know, and it's going to sit the way, however we end up leaving it, it's going to sit like that for a long time. I mean, this building has sat like this for what, over a decade?
Fifteen years, I think.
Fifteen years, almost, right?
Since you were in high school.
Since I was in high school. So. So I'm just saying, you know, I think, I think the mayor's suggestion, I think, is advisable. I think we should consider that option just because of its location, too.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I've got a question because of, in your other life, Victor, you had a landscaping experience, correct? Have you ever put mulch on top of concrete?
No.
Thank you.
I didn't want to say anything.
Sounds like slippery if you walk across it, but anyway, that's why we let staff work on that. Did you, did staff understand what Victor was discussing and I said maybe we ought to talk about that next meeting?
Can you clarify for me, Carl and I were going.
So he didn't want to do a halfway project at the center of downtown. It's a focal point to do a little better on possibly landscaping, but then there's no water there. We can't do water unless we have a water truck water it, but let's have staff look at it and come back with some kind of plan.
Yeah, so a couple of things. In this instance, we have an abatement order from a judge telling us, you know, generally at least what we can do. I think what we'd like to be able to do in the future for these situations with a caveat of, we have to be a little bit careful because we have to set standards across the board. And you have a vacant lot ordinance and technically, if somebody, as long as somebody is meeting what our code says, we, we can only go so far. Having said that, what we'd like to be able to do when we bring these things to you in the future, and this is probably a more holistic change than tonight, is worth discussing, but we'd like to bring you all a plan so you, we can say, here's the plan we're proposing. You can actually see the plan and say, we don't think this is sufficient for whatever the reason might be. So you all are blessing that plan before we go and go get that abatement order. So that we can take that plan to, to a judge and say, this is what we'd like to do. That may not apply in this particular instance, but that's where we'd like to get you.
That works for me.
Yeah, that's right. That works for me and, and to clarify, I know that in our current vacant ordinance, there is language that would allow for some of these vegetations or some of these plants that I'm talking about.
Yeah, it does, it does require a landscaping plan.
Right, exactly. So it's not that.
It's in our ordinance.
Right. Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, then, I'll, does anybody want to entertain a motion? Be that far?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty-five zero-two and authorize funding up to three hundred and fifty thousand for the nuisance abatement project at one seven zero four six Bellflower Boulevard, including the amendments, the supplemental materials of tonight and the discussions that we've had tonight.
Second?
Motion on the floor by Councilman Sanchez and a second by Mayor Protem Sunny Santinas. Call roll, please.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye. Item thirteen A, Mr. Smoot?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an item I'm going to have PJ and Chris to present, but this is coming to you guys just as a organization for the future and to make sure that we're all, A, telling our story about the events that we're doing and B, on the same page as far as when we're doing those events and what events we're doing for the coming fiscal year. So with that, PJ, it's yours.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Before I get into the presentation, Kristen reminded me to let you know that the fun department has arrived tonight and that's why she's here. And then we do have a very serious point of clarification. The Parks and Recreation Department has put mulch on concrete before when we filled the skate park and during COVID, and I must say it did not last very long, so.
Thank you, PJ.
Uh, item thirteen.
That was in a bowl.
Item thirteen A before you this evening is the proposed special events calendar for the City of Bellflower Department of Parks and Recreation. Covering calendar years twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. Staff is seeking your approval of this calendar with the understanding that moving forward, this biennial calendar will be brought to the city council for review annually. This is the first time staff is presenting a two-year calendar in this format and forum. The goal is to provide the city council with a high-level, comprehensive view of the planning process by sharing the calendar in, in this manner. Staff aims to emphasize how events are strategically scheduled to maximize participation by city council members, the community, and city staff. Additionally, aligning this presentation with the city's upcoming budget proposal and approval process ensures optimal timing for strategic planning and resource allocation. As outlined in the staff report, special event programming is a cornerstone of the Parks and Recreation Department's mission. Demand for high-quality community events and recreational opportunities continues to grow. This focus aligns with the priorities set forth in the recent adopted Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which recognizes the department's critical growth phase. In recent years, the number and complexity of events and programs have grown significantly. This growth has been achieved through the efforts of our talented team of both full and part-time staff and has been accomplished without increasing the number of staff or increasing approved budget allocations. The summer of twenty twenty-four described by, by our team as one of our most aggressive schedules yet was a success, highlighting our ability to adapt and innovate to meet community needs. In recent years, we have introduced or adjusted several events, including transitioning from traditional outdoor movies at the Town Center Plaza to a rooftop movie downtown and dive-in movies at the Aquatic Center, launching a holiday home decorating contest and adding events such as the summer kickoff, our family camp out, father-daughter and mother-son dances, photo contests, student art fest, and the, and the city council community walk. Significant adjustments were also made to the street fest schedule, expanding it from four events held every other week to six consecutive weeks with a break during the Fourth of July holiday. This break was utilized to, to feature the rooftop movie in twenty twenty-four, further, further enriching the summer lineup and enhancing the overall event experience. Additionally, I'd like to halli, highlight a key behind-the-scenes initiative that has significantly enhanced our event operations and capability, and that's our REC Leadership Council. This program develop over the, developed over the past few years focuses on leadership development for our key part-time staff. The REC Leadership Council plays a critical role in event logistics and support, meeting regularly to plan smaller events that aren't listed on this event calendar, such as our annual penny carnival and letters to the North Pole. This group also coordinates deployment for larger events. This initiative has been instrumental in boosting the efficiency and effectiveness of our special event programming. With all that context in mind, on the screen is the proposed two-year calendar, which you've had an opportunity to review in the staff report. I'd like to highlight just a few key details for clarification. Events that are highlighted in yellow indicate details and are dates that are still being finalized. Events highlighted in blue reflect one of the details that our team has to go through, and that's the programming dates that significantly impact operations and accessibility at the main event center, requiring coordination between our, our department and the center's staff. Lastly, the high, the events highlighted in green represent new additions that staff is working to bring to fruition. Approving this calendar tonight will enable staff to move forward with the detailed planning required to deliver high-quality, well-coordinated events and programs for our residents. Staff's recommendation to the city council. Staff's recommendation to the city council is to approve the City of Bellflower Department of Parks and Recreation Special Events Calendar for calendar years twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to address any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you, PJ. Good-looking calendar. Busy though. Any questions to our Parks and Rec Department?
No.
Everybody likes it?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, give us a comment.
Yes, um, first of all, um, looking at the schedule of special events, uh, this is mind-boggling. Once you put it on paper, uh, I know that we go to different events, but, um, you know, it seems like they're kind of spread across throughout the year and you don't pay too much attention to it because we are there. But once you see it on paper, it is a lot of events. That's my number one comment. And my second comment is, thank you, thank you, thank you for putting this calendar. I already put on my personal calendar all these events, so, thank you.
It's a lot of typing.
Yes.
Glad you like it. I think it was, they did a good job too. There's like twenty-eight events, so that's one every other week, on the average.
All right.
Anybody like to make a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, actually, I have one question or comment.
Go ahead.
PJ, did, did I hear correctly, did you say something about home decorating contests? Like the home beautification or was that just?
No, it's the hall, it's the hall, so we, we currently have the holiday home decorating contest. That's where we went around in the judging in the trolley. Um, and then the new, one of the new events we're doing, which was actually recommended by a citizen at a council meeting, is a Halloween decorating contest, which will have a similar format. Um, judging may be a little less formal, so.
On, perfect. So on those two decorating contests, I know this is gonna be a, a mission to do, but given the fact that a lot of my constituency is in multi-residential or apartments, could we add a fo, like a photo contest section? Because I know one of the issues that we have is accessibility. What if they were to submit a picture of their home? Or apartment or mobile home, so that they can participate?
You're thinking similar to like our staff door contest, something like that?
Right.
Submit a picture of it.
Exactly. That's exactly where the idea kind of came from. And also from the, the photo contest that we do. It's like a little bit of both. I think that it would be a little bit of more work, but, but I think it in, it's a little bit more inclusive.
It'll just be more work the first year. Once we figure, once we figure out a system, how to do it, it won't be a problem. And I, 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 we'll figure it out.
Yeah, the, the fund department can figure it out.
We, we will, yeah, it may not be fun figuring it out, but we'll make it.
I, I really appreciate that.
I, I think that's something that, uh, we definitely can look into and figure out. Um, potentially incorporating a hashtag or something on social media, some type of submission form. Let, let us bounce around some ideas and there's definitely something we can coordinate within that.
Right, and it.
And even we'll have a separate category winner, uh, type thing, so, yeah, not, not an issue.
Two has apartments as well and multi, you know?
Yep.
I think we all do, but.
Or do it by district.
No, but the whole city.
You can have a winner in each district.
I, the, the, the issue we have with that, eventually, yes, that would be the amazing thing to do, but there are certain districts, more than one district, that do not participate as much in these. I think in the future, that is a good idea to do it by district, but I think we need to build up to that. Um, but we can definitely start just initially, leave it up to our staff, we'll figure it out.
Leave it up to you, just inclusivity on that side.
Figure it out and.
That's one of the things that comes up every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Like two categories, single-family homes and multifamily.
Yeah. Yeah.
And mobile homes.
Well, I think mobile homes would go under multi, because there's several units on one lot.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of, we've got fifty-one trailer parks in this town, we can not forget about them.
Yeah, the, the key, the key is no longer excluding anyone, because right now it's exclusive only to single-family homes. So we got it, we have, we have our marching orders and we, we got it, no issue.
Thank you, appreciate that PJ. And then, um, second question. Um, and I agree with, uh, Mayor Protem, uh, Sunny Santinas, uh, that seeing this is, um, remarkable. You guys do a lot of work and we appreciate that very much. In the in, instance or case that something were to be added, is there gonna be a process? Is there gonna be, have you thought about that? Just a, asking because I, I think having this is, is, uh, is brilliant. I think that it gives us the, the schedule for the next two years, but just curious as to.
I would say this, council member, you will have, um, through your budgeting process, you always have discussions about your budget. If at that point the council wants to add an event, it gives, you have an opportunity to do that, of course. We can budget for anything you want to do. If the council wants to shift priorities and shift to do a hundred special events, you can do that. It's just gonna take a lot more resources to do that. Having said that, planning ahead gives us some ability to at least plan our schedules, plan our staffing resources appropriately. The problem comes when we start, um, you know, taking an event and trying to squeeze it into this very compact schedule. You can imagine how that has impacts, of course, not just on you guys, but on the community, on the other events that are non-city events. You know, for instance, Little League baseball programs.
Right.
Other things, not to mention our staff resources get very strained with overtimes and things like that. So we're, we're careful about that, but we can do it. That's why we wanted to bring it to you in the first place.
Right, I completely, I completely understand that. And I, I think I bring that up because I know that historically speaking, uh, the mayor has had some discretion on, on some items. But if we're doing a two-year cycle, obviously, the current mayor has had the ability to put some input, but would the next mayor, you know, in his term, have that discretion as well?
I would say the opportunity to do that is through the budget process.
Okay.
And even then, I might even say there could come a time where some of these events, you know, as you have over the last fifteen, twenty years, your events shift and they change and they adjust as your community shifts and changes and adjusts. I would only caution you to focus on doing the events that we do extremely well. And if, uh, PJ and his team don't think that we can accomplish that to the level that they're used to, the level that you all expect, take that to heart, because if we can't do it to that level, um, we should hold off. But the opportunity to do that, to your point, is through that budget process, so.
So there is some inherently, some flexibilities, what I'm hearing, okay?
Yeah, and I think within the next twelve months, you'll have this opportunity tonight to look at it. You'll have the budget opportunity and then you'll have next January. We'll plan to bring this every January.
Okay, there you go.
Um, but we'll be within the middle of the budget at that point. And then my only request, just piggybacking on everything Ryan said, is our, our, our planning and how meticulous it is. I do request that when you see this calendar, if you were to add something, don't add something within the next six months. Add it to the second half or to year two. Um, so next year in January, you're gonna see the twenty twenty-six calendar and then twenty twenty-seven and, uh, when, when we're thinking about it.
That answers my question, really. It's, we're looking at it every year, but we're planning kind of two years in advance. That, that was, sorry if I didn't articulate my question.
No, it was, it was, it was good. And this is all brand-new for all of us, and I think it's really good that we're doing this. And, um, this schedule isn't brand-new. This has been posted on my wall for ten years, so. But, uh, just bringing it to this level of detail, uh, to the city council, I think, is very helpful, uh, for you guys to set the direction for us moving forward.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Coops.
And keep it in mind that the event we just had recently with the six oh five ban, I mean, that was nowhere on any piece of paper until two months ago.
I, I hear the ban's gonna continue every year.
God bless him. But that was a good example of something that came up without any scheduling, but you were able to figure something out.
A, a, and I will also bring up, so a lot of these smaller events, um, we've had the luxury of, we have a miscellaneous events count, a, a, account that goes to different items, but, uh, we've been able to add some smaller events within that. Um, we always look to, what are we using out of this? Uh, how do we boost that? Um, and just to give us that little bit of flexibility, because I am constantly challenging our staff. What can we do? You know, this year we did three or four different new things for the Christmas time for, for the kids. And we want to have that flexibility to grow, so there, there is, and we ask for it, we ask for it in the budget. So when you see that miscellaneous events account, that's one of the things that that goes to. Now, it, it, it's not funded to the amount of sixth street fest or a tree lighting ceremony, but it gives us the flexibility to do what we do, um, and to, to not just be stagnant each year as well, where we can grow a little bit, so.
And keep in mind that I don't see Little League on here, that's an event every year, but that's not a city event, but it's one that we all participate in as council members.
Correct, and when you look at the report, it, this is a cornerstone of our department's special events, but there is so much more.
Much more, like the grand opening for the Ninja deal last week.
Yeah.
I mean, little, things like that that need to be rect, or recognized, that there's no way to plan for. That was just a couple of examples of, you try to plan it correctly and there's always some amendments.
Again, the fund department.
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the City of Bellflower Department of Parks and Recreation Special Event Calendar for calendar years twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six.
Second the motion.
Motion on the floor by Ms. Morris and a second by Coops. Call roll, please.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye. Yeah, gotta be quick.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Um, well, I just want to say thank you to the fund department, because looking at this calendar, it's very exciting. Um, and I just kind of had a brief question on like the street fest, because I wasn't sure when else I would get the opportunity to ask. Um, how do you guys choose the musicians that come in and like the musicians that are there? I'm always super excited for the street festivals. I try not to miss them. Um, but I, just wondering, because I noticed like the first street fest, for example, is on Juneteenth, and I just wondered, I'm like, are we able to bring in sort of more culturally-centered sort of artists or music that could be reflected? Because I'm not sure what the processes that you guys do to bring in people.
W, we have an entire, um, submission process, so we have a recreation supervisor that oversees our events and they get dozens of submissions every year. And we have a, a type of quality, we have a budget, um, they have to be able to sign a contract. We have different genres we look at every year, uh, we look at the call, the calendar. So there's a lot of different variables that go in, into it, uh, every summer, so.
Can you connect her with that process?
Sure, yeah, we'll, we'll connect you with our supervisor and you can, uh, send her any bands you may have in mind, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's why I don't want to do it.
Thank you again, council. Um, it's great to see the traditions of Bellflower.
Regarding to.
Yes, actually it is.
Good.
There's a lot of positive and negative and adverse reactions with every event the city produces. Uh, for the community, it's fantastic, but there are four days out of the week that are unattended. And I, I always look back at businesses like Taco Tuesdays are made for people to come out on non, on off-days. And looking at the calendar, as great as it is, it's on prime days. Well, the downtown's the busiest during prime days, Thursday to Saturday. Parking's an issue. So I look at things and it's like, we are open Thursday through Saturday. I bring people from outside the city up to thirty, forty miles away. So when they come here and they tell me, why is the street closed on a Thursday night? Or on, and, and I try and I understand this, what, what the city's all about and I get it, but it's hamstringing the businesses in the downtown. I am one of probably seven businesses that we've spoken about, and it would be great to see a Monday, a Tuesday, a Wednesday being utilized or even a Sunday. Bus, you know, families go out on Sundays, but what we see is, we're gonna use prime days to make the parking that much tougher, to bring people to Bellflower to experience and spend money. So I'm just trying to be understanding, as well as I'm hoping that the council will be understanding, that what we're trying to do is increase commerce, increase people to come to Bellflower and walk. But like the tree lighting ceremony, ten hours of closing the Boulevard, that basically killed. And so as great as it is, and when we watch the exodus of the families that leave the downtown, they go home. They're not spending money. So all I'm asking is to please understand our part of it, where it would be great to utilize four non-prime days to do other activities. Street fest, even though it's only, and I hear it, it's only a few days out of the year, but when you multiply the amount of, like, when you pay rent and you're only open Thursday, Friday and Saturday mostly, that, those days that we're not able to, um, maximize our potential hurts. It really does. And I've been in Bellflower since the seventies. My grandparents have been here through the seventies. I understand Bellflower, but we're trying to be progressive. So on one hand, I see progress, and on the other hand, I see, well, we're sticking to what we've always done. And all I'm asking for is let's find a balance. Let's bring people out on a Tuesday, on a Wednesday, when they're at home, instead of Thursday, Friday and Saturday, when it's the busiest part of the downtown. I'm trying to make sense of it. People ask me, and I listen to a lot of people in the city, but I don't have an answer for it.
Wasn't that long ago when we didn't have nobody here Thursday, Friday and Saturday?
Absolutely.
Wasn't very long ago at all. We'll work on the rest of the days.
And I gotta, I gotta give the city credit. The parking, um, enforcement has been great. I think there's been a lot of great changes going on, but with growth and all this great excitement, there's an adverse reaction to it.
John, we need to bring this up at a.
I understand, sir.
Comments on another night.
But I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Appreciate your comments, I appreciate what you do. We gotta move on. Thank you. All right. Consent calendar. Any recusals or any items need to be pulled for discussion?
Move the consent calendar.
Hold on.
You're too slow.
Well, he was looking at the other side. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item fourteen E.
Fourteen D for Sunny. Dan, did you say you had something? I wasn't paying attention.
No, I was just closing it out.
Oh, okay.
It's too fast.
Anyone else? Nope. But that's it? Okay, fourteen E. What is fourteen E? So, you want to.
Sure, yeah, um, okay.
Ryan, oh, you're already, okay.
Um, fourteen E is a, is a basically a new law that was adopted by, um, effective January first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, it's Assembly Bill four, four thirteen. Uh, it sounded very complicated, so I asked our public works, I mean, Public City Director to have an illustration on, um, how to interpret the law. So, Mr. McNerney, can you explain?
Mr. Mayor.
Because when you read the law, it's very complicated.
Uh, yes, sir, it is. Uh, so, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I wish I could take credit for the wonderful visual aid there, but you could thank the state of California for something, uh, for doing that. Um, so the new law, what it basically is, is you can no longer park within twenty feet of a marked or unmarked crosswalk. And, um, it, it applies, if we're looking in this situation as, as shown pictured, um, if we have two-way directions on streets, it only applies to the right-hand side of your vehicle. So if you're driving, you're the driver of the vehicle, it'll be on your passenger side, um, where a car can no longer park within twenty feet. Um, in situations where it applies both the driver and passenger side, or in cases where there's a one-way street, which we don't have too many of those here in Bellflower, just a couple, um, that basically is what the new law is. So a, it is both, as I said earlier, a marked or unmarked crosswalk, and there is no requirement that there needs to be signs or curb markings posted. So these will just, this will become another one of the rules of the road, which drivers are going to be lawfully expected to know this restrict, this restriction is now in existence.
Uh, very good illustration. So, um, being tech, uh, I mean, I want to be technical here. This is a very good, uh, illustration, the upper left-hand corner, because part of the car is within twenty feet. Okay, so I'm kind of wondering how strict is gonna be the implementation of this new law to measure the actual twenty feet?
Tape measure.
So for example, let's say, if it's protruding by, let's say, one or two feet, will the car, do you think, will get citation?
So that is not the practice of how our parking enforcement carries out their duties. Um, for, I'll give you an example of where it's more of spirit of the law as opposed to letter of the law, uh, fire hydrants. So fire hydrant state law is fifteen feet. Uh, it has to be away from a fire hydrant. Our staff does not go out there and they do not measure fifteen feet away from a fire hydrant to then get someone who's twelve and a half feet away from it. Um, and the situation would apply here as well. If someone is eighteen, nineteen, seventeen feet away from a crosswalk, we are not gonna cite that vehicle. If a vehicle is, was well within the range, uh, where it is in fact gonna be impeding someone's visual sight of that person walking through the crosswalk, we're talking, you know, four to five feet, more than likely a citation will. More than likely, a citation will be issued at that point for that violation.
But not one, maybe one foot, maybe.
It goes into some of the officers, you know, they have discretion out there and, and I, and I encourage them to exercise that discretion. Could they issue a citation? Yes. Do I think we will if the car is nineteen feet away? No.
Okay, all right, good. Um, can this be in the website?
Sure.
Can we, I, because this is very informative. It will help our residents, um, interpret the law based on this. It's very clear to me because it shows the unmarked crosswalk and this shows the marked crosswalk. A perfect example, perfect.
Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, we've posted this on social media as well?
Uh, correct, yes, we did, yes.
Okay, all right, very good, that's all I have, thank you so much.
I have a question. Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Okay, so historically, I've seen guys, people park right on the corner. You know, have you seen that action right here?
Yeah, correct, yes.
So this is going to eliminate that possibility.
Absolutely, yes.
And this is, the state has mandated this.
Correct, yes.
So in this example, same thing over here, gotta stay twenty feet away from this corner?
No, that would not apply unless it was a one-way street.
Okay, same way over here, you can't, that doesn't apply?
Correct.
I can park right up to the corner here?
If it's a two-way street, then it would only apply to your right-hand side.
Okay. All right, I get it, thank you.
About a month ago, Brian and I had this conversation and I was so upset for people parked. There is no law now, is that correct?
Correct, there is no law currently for parking too close to a corner, correct.
You can park on this side or that side, yeah.
Correct.
And this is kind of a, uh, you know, I know you love the picture, it's a beautiful picture, but every corner usually has a radius. They don't have a radius, must be they're downtown Sacramento or something where they got this one. But yeah, it's, but now you, you know, you figure this is the crosswalk width or whatever, the limit line, I guess you would go, normally go for you, you know, which is probably ten feet. So you can't park, you know, here, can you park up to the curb, huh? That's what makes it, it's basically for visual, vis, visual, so. But anyway, who knows, but at least we had something. I don't know why it didn't go on both sides, but at least you can see for people coming. That's all I have. Great picture except for, yes.
Mr. Mayor, from the mayor, so this kind of helps us with the art, with the, um, the enhancement at a future date on traffic calming, right? There's better visibility and now we, you know where I'm going with this, right? You know, the traffic circles or, or things of that nature to slow down speeding traffic. We already, one of the concerns we always had was we're going to lose parking. Well, we're getting, the parking's already being removed.
Yeah, half of it.
Half of it, so you know, just saying, food for thought down the road.
Yeah, the overarching intent here is pedestrian safety, create visibility for pedestrians in the area.
That's really good, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Go ahead.
Can I pull item fourteen C?
Of course you can.
Is it not too late?
He's another slow.
I know, I'm sorry. I just have a quick question for Mr. Tay. Mr. Ree.
Mr. Tay.
Or Anna. Or Anna. Um, my question is i- in regards to volume. So I, I, I see how much we collected in, in, in fees. Um, but compared to previous years, what was the volume, the number of permits that were actually? And this may be a Beth question, uh, the number of, of permits to kind of get us to the same numbers? Did we see a decrease in, in permits pulled or?
Anna, Beth, I'm going to ask one, whoever's going to answer the question, just come up here so we can get it on the record, either up to the podium or up to the staff table.
To rephrase that a little bit, um, while they get up here, the number, obviously we collected more, but that's because our fees went up, so I kind of want to get an idea where we were in building permits.
I think what Councilmember Sanchez is looking for is how do, how does this year compare to previous years of, of?
In volume.
Development.
Number of permits pulled.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. If you actually look at the, uh, treasurer's report, um, it shows there the detail of the development impact fees that were collected for the current fiscal year and also past fiscal year. So you will see that, um, to date, there's not as much yet in comparison to prior fiscal year.
Right, I see on page one, uh, of five, I see the, um, twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four and then I see twenty-two dash twenty-three, so I see number eighteen, number seventeen. And I see how much we, the beginning balance was and how much we collected in park fees, uh, in, in other revenues. So my question is, what we collected in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, which equaled four fifteen, four thousand, sorry, four hundred and fifteen thousand? And what we collected in twenty twenty-four was four hundred and forty-six thousand? Given that our fees went up roughly last year at some point in time, my question is the volume, how many fees? How many actual permits were issued in twenty-two, twenty-three and versus twenty-three, twenty-four? I don't see that in the report, that's all.
Understood, I'm sorry, for clarification, um, if you could look at agenda item fourteen B as in boy?
Oh, okay.
And then on page three.
Yeah.
So this shows current fiscal year to date, the collections for development impact fees. And then on page five, it shows the detail of last fiscal year, uh, from July twenty-three to June twenty twenty-four. And then, um, we could also provide the number of permits that were pulled related to the development impact fee for July twenty-two to June thirty twenty-three. Um, like you mentioned, uh, the fee went up, um, just by comparing the number of permits pulled from July twenty-four to November thirty, uh, compare it to July twenty-three to June thirty twenty-four. There was a lot, there were a lot more last fiscal year.
Okay, so we're seeing a decrease then in fee, in permits, okay, thank you, that was my question. Very good, thank you, Anna, appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Your motion.
I'm afraid to do it.
You can motion it, I'll second it.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
As explained. Call roll, please.
Mayor Protem Santiness.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Councilmember Morse.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Dutton.
Aye.
Council reports, uh, Mr. Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First meeting of our new year of two thousand twenty-five and, uh, we're all looking forward to a great year as, uh, was proposed by the, uh, public, uh, safe, not public, the, uh, Parks and Rec. And excited to see what's going to be happening throughout the city throughout the year. Um, we're, we're, uh, on the right course to try to complete some more projects. We've got things in the hoppers, so stick with us. I always am excited to find out and, and, uh, and excite the, uh, constituency on things that are coming forward. I think that what we did tonight on trying to ma, improve the heart of Bellflower, we're giving a lot of thought to that vacant building and how it needs to be worked upon. And I think that'll help the whole environment on the boulevard to, uh, take it to the next level. And, uh, we're, there's other properties in Bellflower that need some tweaking here as well, so we're not, not ignoring any of this. We're just trying to make Bellflower better, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. Councilmember Morse?
No comment.
All right, and Councilmember Sanchez?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first off, I'd just like to, um, uh, share my thoughts and prayers for the families of the, and the, uh, victims of the fires. Um, I know it's some tough times, but I'm really proud of the region and the communities that have come together to try to help. Um, and I know we all feel that way. Um, secondly, I'd like to, uh, just, uh, thank Public Works, um, the many road improvement, uh, sidewalk improvements that they've been doing throughout the city. Uh, if you see, uh, the, the, the workers out there, you know, closing down the sidewalks and I know it takes a couple of days of no parking in the areas, but it's totally worth it. Uh, it's improving the sidewalks, getting rid of those sidewalks that are, um, elevated and, and, you know, where people can trip and hurt, get hurt and stuff like that. So just want to thank Public Works on that. Um, and then I, I'll let someone else speak about the great event that we did, um, last week. Or was it this week? It was this week, huh, the ribbon cutting?
Yeah.
Oh, man, all right, I'll let someone else speak about that.
Last week. This is the first day of this week.
Oh, that's right. It's the last week, all right, all right, last week, today is Monday, you're right, I forget. Um, and then, uh, I'd like to report out that last Sun, not this Sunday, the past, but the one before, um, myself and the city manager attended Contract Cities Association's Legislative Tour in Sacramento. Um, one of the key things that we advocated with our legislators was the implementation, the timely implementation of Prop thirty-six, which as you are aware, uh, focuses on, on repeat offenders, uh, burglaries and organized, um, uh, organized, um, smashing grabs. Um, so we advocated for that, um, that we had a press release on that and we met with legislators on that. Uh, at the same time, on behalf of the city, uh, we, um, we had a, an agenda for ourselves and that was to advocate for additional funding for some of our up and coming projects that we have, uh, related to our parks. Uh, we advocated for, um, uh, better assistance with Caltrans and our ninety-one corridor. Um, the, the, the need to clean those sections out, uh, from the debris, from the eucalyptus trees and, and, and then the sound wall, um, needed on the ninety-one corridor where there are residential homes that, that abud to the, to the ninety-one corner that don't have a sound wall. We expressed our issues and concerns with Caltrans related to that matter and we also, um, advocated for, um, some additional reform in regards to how we appoint regional leaders to certain boards like Metro and AQMD and such of that manner. Um, and we also advocated for some of our, um, some additional support with our, um, additional housing that we have, that we need. Obviously, we currently have our shelter, um, but we don't have a supportive, um, wraparound housing for the next phase for people who are exiting homelessness. And so that was something that we've been working on, obviously we have a, a desired location, but we ran into those issues with Edison and so we've talked about that as well. So that, that was kind of the, the gist of the three-day, of the two-day event, um, two-day legislative tour. So just want to report out on that, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mayor Protem Sunny Santiness.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to pass on, um, a couple of thank yous to our Public Works Department. I got a couple of phone calls from residents of the, um, west side of Lakewood Boulevard thanking us for the new, um, traffic signal on Lakewood and Main. Now they said they can cross the street now safely to do their gro, grocery shopping on Alondra and Lakewood, so thank you, Public Works. Uh, on a side note, I'd like to request the city council meeting tonight be adjourned in memory of two individuals. First, uh, in memory of Sidro Sid V. Pet Jr., a distinguished engineer and beloved family man, was born in Coroan Palau in Philippines on July first, nineteen forty-three and passed away on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, age of eighty-one. Uh, Sid pursued higher education with dedication, earning a Bachelor of Science degree in mechanical engineering and an MBA. His career in aerospace, composites and manufacturing was marked by significant achievements. Notably, his innovative continuous improvement initiatives revolutionized the manufacturing process of fiberglass batwear units, which are now sold worldwide. Beyond his professional accomplishments, Sid was a passionate sportsman. He spent many years perfecting his tennis skills. Upon retirement, became an avid golfer, enjoying the camaraderie and challenge of the sport. Sid lives behind a legacy of innovation, love and dedication. He survived by his wife of fifty, for fifty-five years, Rosario, uh, two sons, Ariel, who is the former mayor and council member of the city of Lakewood, and brother Terry and three grandchildren, Natalie, Emma and Sadie. Our deepest condolences and heartfelt, um, sympathies go to the Faye family. And secondly, I also would like to, uh, adjourn this meeting in honor of, in memory of Neil Bernard Poole. Neil Bernard Poole was born on Jul, June twen, June twelve, nineteen forty-six and passed away on December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four at age of seventy-eight. He was the father of our city employee Jennifer Russell of our city clerics department. Neil proudly served in the United States Army as sergeant during one of the most pivotal moments in American history. As a combat engineer stationed in Vietnam, he displayed exceptional bravery and skill. His service was marked by numerous commendations, including the National Defense Service Medal, uh, Good Conduct Medal, Vietnam Service Medal, Vietnam Campaign Medal and marksman badge with M fourteen qualification. Uh, he completed his military service honorably in nineteen sixty-nine, uh, after transferring to the USAR Control Group. After his time in the army, Neil embarked on a thirty-seven-year career with the Huntington Park Public Works Department. Uh, starting as an electrician, he quickly rose to become Director of Field Services, which is the equivalent of Public Works Department, where his leadership and dedication made a profound impact on the community he served. Neil was known for his strong work ethic, resourcefulness and na, and a knack in fixing anything. He's the fixer, Mr. Fixer. Anything more than anything, Neil cherished his role as a devoted family man. He started forty-five beautiful years with his beloved wife, Tanya Poole. Together, they built a home filled with love, laughter and cherished, cherished memories. He survived by his wife, Tanya, children Jennifer, Neil, Christine and Natalie, four grandchildren, two great-grandchildren. Our deepest, deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to Jennifer and the whole family. Again, I'd like to request the city council meeting tonight to be adjourned in memory of Sidro Sid V. Pet Jr. and Neil Bernard Poole. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Santiness. All right, what, uh, Mr. Sanchez was alluding to, there was a ribbon cutting last week at Thompson Park for a, uh, ninja course, uh, ninja playground equipment, bright red. I asked our Public Works Director, how do you keep kids off this thing? It's so bright and fun looking while they're building it. He says, we didn't. Without answering that question because that's what I was thought for sure, there was, they were going past the construction fence. But anyway, we, uh, um, did the ribbon cutting on that with all my colleagues, uh, last Thursday and, uh, kids got to go on the course for, um, after we did that and, and not get in trouble this time. But, uh, it's a pretty, uh, impressive little, uh, uh, get-up that we put in there for the children and, uh, and bring their, get their little heartbeats up and then, you know, for late teens too. It's, there was actually a thirty-year-old guy that go, travels the circuit for these courses and, uh, he's like an all-time winner in that super ninja stuff on TV. And he was there doing his handstands and doing all kinds of funny stuff and, and, uh, he did the course. I think it was like in forty-one seconds or something like that. But, uh, with that said, we got another, uh, asset here in our part, great, wonderful Parks and Rec Department. And, uh, with that, that's all I got. And we're going to adjourn this meeting in memory of Sid P. Junior and Neil Poole to the regular, uh, ne, regular meeting of Bellflower City Council at five PM on Monday, January twenty-seventh. And that will be in the green room because we're going to have the outgoing mayor's ceremony. Um, past Mayor Dan Coops is going to be honored. They call me a short timer, but it'd be pretty short. But, uh, so we're, uh, going to start that at five o'clock on, uh, next, uh, January twenty-seventh. And there'll be, uh, lightened fresments afterwards upstairs. And with that, uh, we are adjourned.